Good evening, welcome to our online audience. This is the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for City Council District One. I am your host Tammy Harold. I'm an admin team member and treasurer for the League of Women Voters of the Pikes Peak Region. In partnership with UCCS College of Public Service, we are coming to you live from Helen Keller Elementary. Our candidates for our, the running for City Council District One are candidate Dave Donaldson and Lee Limkool. Your moderators for tonight's forum are Dr. Regina Winters. She's an assistant dean at the UCCS College of Public Service. And with her tonight are two students that will introduce themselves from the College of Public Service.
Good evening. My name is Regina Winters and I'm the associate dean for the College of Public Service at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, AKA UCCCS. We are always excited to support educational forums in our backyard and across Colorado. This forum is very special to us because it's in our backyard, it's in our home. With me are two of our graduate students from our programs in criminal justice, social work, and public administration. And I'm going to have both of them introduce themselves to let you know what they're studying at the current moment. Emily?
Hi, I'm Emily and I'm studying a master's of public administration and a graduate certificate in grant writing.
Hello, good evening. My name is Diana Starkis. I am a first-year graduate student studying public administration and focusing on grant management and program evaluation.
So we will get right into it with, by having our first candidates talk with one-minute opening statements. And so our first candidate is candidate Limkool.
Good evening. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and UCCS for supporting this. Yeah, Lee Limkool, I've been in Colorado Springs for 28 years. The Air Force brought me here to teach math at the academy and loved it so much, stayed like a lot of us do. So I've really put down roots in the community. I now live in Mountain Shadows. I'm very interested in public safety. I've been knocking a lot of doors and I understand the concerns that are out there. I love Colorado Springs. I want to give back. I've led a life of service between the military and serving as a trusted advisor to the government in my, in my second career. Also, I've done a lot of volunteer work in the area of suicide prevention at the El Paso County level and now at the state level on the Suicide Prevention Commission. And I want to give back. I want to keep Colorado Springs beautiful and moving forward and vibrant and a beautiful place for our, our kids and our grandkids to live. Thank you.
And candidate Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters, UCCS, and other sponsors for, for doing this tonight. And I want to thank those of you who've taken the time to come out here tonight. Dave Donaldson, I'm the current city councilman from District One. I've done it for four years. I can run for reelection one time, so I'm running for reelection this one time. I ask you to give me another four years. If you drive around the district, you'll see my sign say "Vote Donaldson, he votes for you." And that is certainly what I've tried to do over these four years to represent you. Recently in the Gazette, a writer, a letter to the editor writer referred to me as the honorable Dave Donaldson, Councilman for the People. And why did she say that? One big reason, I don't take developer donations, right? So I don't have developer money. Fifty percent of what council does is land use. We decide on annexations, we decide on rezones, we decide on development plans. The mayor doesn't get a vote. We act as judges. Do you want your judge to have taken money from one of the, from your opponent in a case? I'm out of time.
Thank you very much. Now on to our candidate questions. For our first question, I will ask candidate Limkool and then followed by candidate Donaldson. You'll have one minute to address the question. And the first question is, "UCCS has a vested interest in attracting young professionals to Colorado Springs. Whether you grew up in Colorado Springs as your hometown or want to make this your hometown, affordable housing options while completing workforce credentials and entry-level work is challenging. How can you help address affordable housing while keeping this area attractive to young professionals and their families?"
We have to make sure that, that the housing that we add, that we have to add, that's affordable and allows the young professionals you talk about, the young firefighters and police officers that we need to hire, and our young teachers and our young airmen and guardians that come here, is steered towards areas in the community that can safely handle that type of, that type of increased load in terms of housing. There are places that would be made less safe if you were to infill. For instance, the, the Wildland Urban Interface that many of us are familiar with. But, but we need to work closely with the development community as they build these homes and hold them accountable to, to develop and, and produce the starter homes that my, my grandson, for instance, who's a two-striper in Abilene, Texas, was able to buy. If he moved up here, he'd get $800 more a month in basic housing allowance and he wouldn't be able to afford anything in terms of buying and starting to build equity. Thank you.
And candidate Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you. And unfortunately, a lot of the forces that act in housing are national forces. Interest rates, the cost of supplies, you know, construction materials, the cost of labor. So some of this council, we just can't control those things. Things we can do is make sure our zoning, that's something council controls. Make sure the zoning isn't inadvertently restricting where housing can be built. Another thing we can do is push back against things from the state like there's construction defect laws that make it very hard for builders to build townhomes. Townhomes used to be something that a young couple, it was their first way to get into building equity. But because of, you can be sued very easily if you build townhomes now and lose everything. Builders don't want to build it. We, however, we cannot allow this, the desire for affordable housing to be used as kind of a buzzword to allow developers to build in certain areas such as 30th and Garden of the Gods. I voted twice against large density apartment complexes there.
Thank you. Thank you. For our next question, candidate Donaldson, you are first, followed by candidate Limkool. Your question is, "The military, healthcare industry, local government, and tourism drive Colorado Springs' economy. What efforts will you make to support those groups while drawing in new industries and high-paying jobs opportunities to the city?"
Well, it's...
One minute?
Yeah.
Okay. It's interesting, you mentioned the military. I served 20, 21 years in the Army. I was a Green Beret. I was a physician assistant. I was a Russian linguist. I served as, I worked as a physician assistant afterwards. And what was the third industry you mentioned? Tourism?
Tourism.
Yeah. So what we can do on council, I would say the biggest thing we can do for all of those is there's two things we should focus on, making this city a clean and safe city. That will attract people that want to live here. It attracts businesses. It creates an environment where everything can flourish. We have a great relationship with the military. You know, I've been part of that over the last four years. I'll continue that. The healthcare industry, I understand some of the challenges of that. And so I feel I'm actually, was just recently elected as the president of the El Paso County Board of Health. That was just last week, I think that happened. And tourism, in District One, we have Garden of the Gods and other very large or very important tourist sites.
Thank you. Candidate Limkool?
Yes, the lodging rental car tax in, in the city is, is in the, really the bottom of the barrel for cities this size. We need, we can do much more to make Colorado Springs attractive to visitors and, and that, those attractions pay their own way because of the taxes on people that are visiting Colorado Springs and, and making use of, of our grandeur. So I would like to see an increase in LART that allows us to, to vector more funding to, to things downtown such as, such as Pride, such as the Western Pancake Breakfast, other things that bring people into this beautiful, beautiful city and generate income for our hard-working businesses to, to actually profit and, and see revenue increases and, and just a fun, vibrant downtown that brings, that brings people in. The military, we've got to keep our costs down. I've worked on base re-alignment enclosure in the mid-'90s and military pays attention to the cost of housing.
Thank you. For our next question, candidate Limkool, you are first, followed by candidate Donaldson. As a respectful reminder, you have one minute to respond. The question is, "Colorado Springs Utilities is looking to diversify its resources while meeting state objectives for environmentally responsible, sustainable practices. Within the city council's role as the CSU's board, what vision are you advocating that the Colorado Springs Utilities adopt to meet the challenges of our growing community?"
I think CSU does a, does a really wonderful job for us. I'm glad that, that, that we own it, that it wasn't divested years ago as some wanted. The switch from coal to gas is, is market-driven and I loved seeing CSU get out ahead of that. And it's, and it creates much, much less pollution than coal did and, and the generation of natural gas is much less hard on the planet. I am for the exploration of certainly renewables and renewables are here to stay and, but, but also the, the small modular nuclear power generation systems are a common thing. They're, they're safe. The military's been putting them in subs since the '60s. This is radically different technology and certainly much cheaper than what we would put in a, in a, in a sub. But it gives us that on-demand that, that we need to, to balance out renewables that aren't always on-demand depending on, on sunlight, depending on lack of wind, weather, what have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limkool. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I've been on council for four years, so I've served on the Board of Utilities for four years. The last two years I've been the chair of the Board of Utilities. We want, we focus on really two things, rates and reliability. So we want to maintain 100% reliability of our four services, which are gas, providing natural gas to your homes, electric, water, and wastewater. Power generation, the state has some very strict mandates. We have to hit 80% reduction in our emissions by 2030. And then they were going to try to get us to hit 100% reduction, which is no emissions, 10 years later or by 2050. CSU, and I support this, we've pushed back against that because we can't do that and keep rates at all affordable. It would drive rates to, to a level where it would really hurt poor families. So we are, one of the bills that's up in the state legislature now, and I talked to the senator just today who's running that bill, would make nuclear a clean energy source in Colorado. That will help us.
Thank you.
For our next question, we have one-minute responses. And candidate Donaldson, you are first. And the question is, "Each of you have expressed support for additional police officers and the retention in Colorado Springs, but outside of supporting well-staffed police force, what are the ideas you have for increasing public safety in our community?"
Well, that is number one. Number one for public safety, when you pick up your phone and you call 911, what you would like is, is for a police officer to arrive. And so, and that is within the power of, of council. Council really has three things that we do. One is land use, and I would tell you that's 50% of it. So we may spend a lot of time talking about other stuff, but think about who you want representing you on land use issues. Two is utilities, that's 25% of our time. Everything else is the other. The fact is, the budget comes to us from the mayor. The chief financial officer brings the budget to us and council kind of tinkers around the edges with the budget. If council supports the, the amount requested by the mayor, we've got, and we don't cut it. We've essentially done our part. We've provided the mayor with what he has asked for. And I voted for it the first two times and I voted against the budget the last two times because it cut operation and maintenance for our police.
And candidate Limkool?
As you just said, my opponent, opponent voted against the last two budgets, which would have increased staffing for both police and firefighters. We need to, we need to increase staffing in police by 60 and firefighters by, by 30. And if we, and when we do that, and that'll just get us to where we need to be today, setting aside growth, then we need to retain them. I learned that, I learned that in the Air Force. You, you recruit, in this case, firefighters and police officers, but you retain families. So we're back to affordable housing. So that young firefighter, that young police officer can start their family, start building equity in a, in a home or a, or a condo or a townhome and, and start that, start up that ladder the same way that a whole lot of us did. It's just very much harder for them now and we need to roll up sleeves, you know, on city council together, pass those budgets, get the, the increased boots on the ground, and then take care of their families so they can live in a beautiful place that they serve.
Thank you. We had a few follow-up questions that were along the same line that I wanted to make sure to get your answers on from our audience. And with that, first up will be candidate Limkool, followed by candidate Donaldson. If you would, for 30 seconds, if you would, do you feel that our police and firefighters have adequate mental health support to complete their work?
Military and veterans, our first responders are in a high-risk category for, unfortunately for suicide. So there, there has to be more we can do. We have to meet them in their workplace. There are initiatives that have been championed by the, the Suicide Prevention Collaborative for El Paso County, of which I'm a member, to, to help in this area. They need to understand safe storage of firearms. That's my particular area of interest because firearms are the, the most lethal means and they need to be stored safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Donaldson?
Okay. Um, you know, it's not for me to say if, if they have enough mental health support. Really, I need to talk to the chief of police, the fire chief, and others in, in the two agencies, the fire and police, and find out if they feel like they have enough support. And if they don't, then I would certainly support increasing that in whatever way we're going to do that. You know, I'm a, I'm a veteran of the Army. I'm a former physician assistant. I've treated mental health problems. I've prescribed antidepressants and anti-anxiety meds, so I take this very seriously.
Thank you. For our next question, remember you to have one minute to answer. You're, candidate Donaldson, you will be first, and then Limkool, you will follow. Transparency is critical to public trust. Openness about campaign donations and the role of special interests is of concern to some voters. Do you support any campaign finance reforms? Are there any donations you would not accept? Candidate Donaldson?
That is a great question, and it's only one minute. One minute's not much time. In fact, I was censured on council during my first four years for asking three or four council members who had taken thousands of dollars from a developer to not vote on that, to recuse themselves from that developer's project, which was at 30th and Garden of the Gods in a fire evacuation choke point. It's a high-density apartment complex. And they could have simply said, "No, no, we'll be neutral." It's not against the rules. They can, they can vote. I think we do need some campaign finance reform. And in fact, in my question, in my answers to the questions which were sent to us by the League of Women Voters, the last one addresses that. It says, "What changes would you recommend?" I think we should consider campaign donation maximums. There are none right now in city council. Someone can give a candidate $10,000, $25,000, and that happens on council. In fact, the HBA just awarded $10,000 donations to candidates, not to me. I won't accept them.
Candidate Limkool?
A year into, into council, councilor Donaldson's term, he ran for another office at the state level. In that campaign, he accepted over $10,000 from developers and there was an additional dark money campaign against his opponent, Steph V. Hill, who ultimately prevailed. Then he threw his fellow councilors under the bus for, for accepting smaller amounts of, of donations from, from developers while he was a sitting council member voting on development issues. He just happened to be running for a different office, but the money was coming from developers. So I think this is what makes, gets people so frustrated with politicians who, who say one thing, but then quietly do another.
And I would ask to be, to be allowed to respond to that.
Please take 30 seconds to respond and then he'll be able to respond as well.
Here's the big difference. When you sit on council, you sit as the judges for these proposals, like an annexation, which a developer wants, a rezone, which a developer wants. You don't do that in the State House. If you take donations from developers, you're not going to hear their projects up in the State House. It's a totally different thing, right? You're not acting as a judge in their cases, so it's totally different.
Except, except that, Councilman Donaldson was sitting as a city councilor, voting on issues brought before city council by developers while taking over $10,000 from those same developers, running for a different office. But he was the same person taking that money as, and making those votes and running for that office.
We appreciate the robustness of the responses. Diana, the next question?
I'm going to ask you not to debate back and forth. This is a forum and unfortunately, we're not going to have back and forth, so I am going to ask you to just let us ask the questions and we will not get into debates here. This is different than a debate, sorry.
So moving into our next question, candidate Limkool, you are first, followed by candidate Donaldson. And again, you have one minute to respond. The question is, "We anticipate changes in federal resources supporting emergency response, which can leave local governments more vulnerable. What would you do to strengthen Colorado Springs' fire mitigation and other disaster preparedness?"
We have already leveraged Tabor money through, by, you know, vote to, to enhance our fire mitigation. And I think CSFD is doing a masterful job with that. I think there is a bigger look that needs to be taken. Because of the work I did in, both in the Air Force and industry for over 40 years, we studied large military operations up, up until including the theater level, flow of forces, the activities of the enemy, because the enemy has a vote in these things, and they're, they're highly random, but you can study them and you can develop robust, efficient solutions that perform well in terms of, of fire suppression, fire mitigation, and most importantly, for those of us on the West Side particularly, fire egress, to, to make sure that we keep, we can make the case to our citizenry that we are keeping them safe with the resources at hand. And I think it's not just the, it's not just Mountain Shadows and Peregrine and, and the, the hillsides. You can be in the wooie in a grassland, as we saw with the Marshall Fire.
Thank you. Candidate Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you. And since I was on council, we did, that, that council did send for, to the ballot, an opportunity for citizens to either vote or, for or against a Tabor retention so that the city could keep $20 million. And the citizens said, "Yep, that's a good idea." And so we have a $20 million fund and we use essentially, I think it's like one to two million per year to do fire mitigation. But we don't just spend it. What we do is we go and we seek grants to leverage for $100,000. Maybe we can get $500,000 or a million. And so that, that committee, which I was a member of, seeks those opportunities. We'll have to wait and see. You know, I think there's a lot of flux with what's going on at the federal level. What, what impact is it going to have on us locally? PPACG, Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments, also seeks grants. The military bases that we have nearby allow us to seek some grants to do mitigation around those areas, so we look for those kind of opportunities.
Thank you.
Candidates, we've had a couple of questions come through regarding the Rock Remen Library. And in short, they sort of collated around a couple of things. City council is responsible for making the appointments of city boards and commissions. Over the past few years, the city council has appointed three new trustees to the Pikes Peak Library District who voted to close the Rock Remen Library. What are your thoughts about that closure and what would you might do differently? And this is... And this first question goes to Councilman Limkool. Oh, sorry, candidate, candidate Limkool.
Thank you. Yes, well, A, I would encourage everybody to, to Google culture wars and library appointments in, in Pikes Peak Library Board. There's some fascinating information out there that I think will, will, you'll find very intriguing. Yeah, three, three new trustees put on the board with frankly, malice aforethought. That was a conscious decision. And those people were put there for the purpose of culture wars, not because they care about the, of libraries at all. And we've seen that in the Cavalier and Tone-Def closure of the Rock Remen Library. But those people are still on the board. So we have a real problem with, with governance of the, of the library board and it's, it's going to take a team effort. It's not just city council, it's county commissioners. And to reopen that, we're going to have to look for additional sources of, of funding. And I'm, I'm very open to, to talking to the school districts that, whose students benefit and private public partnerships. Thank you.
And candidate Donaldson?
I'm intimately familiar with the whole Rock Remen Library disaster. When we were first, when it was first told to me that, "Hey, the library board's considering closing Rock Remen." I met with the CEO, I met with two of the board of trustees. They guaranteed me it wouldn't happen in '24, last year. It would be at the end of '25, they would consider it. They lied to me. So I went to the meeting where they voted on it and I spoke twice. I asked for permission a second time, they barely granted it to me, and told them not to do it. It's a bad idea. It's a very efficient library, it should stay open. They voted to close it. After that, I worked with citizens, Carla Powers, Joe Pelka, and others to create that Save Rock Remen Library group. I was at the first meeting when there were only three people there. I've spoken every time against it. I have asked, I got council to, to sign a letter saying that we wanted the PPLD board of trustees to come and testify in front of council. They did. I'm willing to remove those three that were put on there. I'm the only council member that has said they'll do that. I've donated $1,000 to COS Reads for that interim library.
Okay, reminder, we have one minute to answer these questions. And for the next question, candidate Donaldson will be first and then it will be candidate Limkool. So the question is, "Development and growth have caused massive increases in the flow rates and need for downstream generalization of Fountain Creek. As a counterperson, do you support collaborative efforts with the city of Fountain, El Paso County, and Pueblo County to ensure our stormwater infrastructure continues to receive funding?" Candidate Donaldson?
Yeah, absolutely. Of course. Just a few days ago, I went out and walked this, the, the Sinton Trail. And I think many of you in here have probably walked along that and looked at the, the canal there with a citizen who's concerned about the stormwater infrastructure there. I used to serve on that stormwater board. Absolutely. And the idea, what we do now is we try to slow the velocity of the water down the stormwater canals. Back in the '70s and '80s, they made them out of concrete. But what that does is it speeds the water up, so it goes fast and it, it undercuts the banks and causes damage. So I've worked with, with citizens on that. I mean, this is, this is something I think everybody can agree on. We want healthy creeks, you know, a good environment for wildlife and for citizens. This might be the easiest question I get all night. I'm not even going to go over a minute on it. So yes.
Thank you. Candidate Limkool?
Yeah, the, this is a problem that runs all the way from, you know, the northern edges, northeast edges of Colorado Springs. I used to live along Cottonwood Creek and saw the, the banks slipping into the water during rainstorms. All the way down to Pueblo, we need to be a, a good neighbor to Pueblo and we have been. That, that's what allowed us to do the Southern Delivery System, was, was their agreement and, and some, and some, some major commitments of, of resources to stabilize in the banks and stabilizing Fountain Creek. So yes, we, we have to stay on it. Anytime you put up a seawall, you create, you create problems upstream as well as where it presently is. I learned that from growing up on the Mississippi River. So we, that, that stream needs a place to go in high, high-water times and those same places to go can be excellent wildlife cover and... and enhance the potential for fishing. I saw a picture of a brown trout caught out of the confluence of Monument Creek and Fountain Creek, so think what we could do. Thanks.
Thank you, Candidate Lemko. We are going to take a quick pause.
Me again. Don't go away. We have more questions and answers coming up. We want to give the candidates just a real short break. They've been answering questions right and left. It's harder when you have just two, because they don't get a break in between. And we do appreciate you putting your names on the ballot and giving us the opportunity to ask you these questions tonight. We know it's not always easy. I wanted to remind you that the League of Women Voters is a nonprofit and a nonpartisan group. We are not just for women. We also enjoy having men join us. Everyone who is civically engaged, then we are the perfect organization for you. As our banner here says, "We are all about empowering voters and defending democracy." I am so proud to be a part of this organization of women and men that are out there fighting for democracy and encouraging voting. I want to thank our sponsors tonight, UCCS College of Public Service and Studio 809 Podcasts that are helping us out. I also would like to thank Kate, who's back there with our online technical support, and all of our different League members that are here that helped put on this, especially our voter service team. They've worked really hard to put all these different forms together. And now, candidates are ready for some more questions. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Winters, Emily, and Diana.
Thank you. So to move forward, we're going to incorporate another question from our audience. Thank you for submitting them. For our next question, Candidate Lemko, you are first, followed by Candidate Donaldson. And again, you have one minute to respond. These questions center around response times for ambulance service. Most cities our size run their own EMS services. Do you support Colorado Springs continuing to contract with a for-profit company for these services? If not, what do you recommend instead? Candidate?
I watched with interest as EMS, that as transport was considered to be brought into the city as an enterprise. I think at the time, the communication of the numbers, of what that would do in terms of revenue, was perhaps a little unclear. I think that that's something that could be a moneymaker for the city as an enterprise. I've talked to firefighters about this in detail, and one assured me that every city that's ever brought transport EMS under the city into an enterprise has made money off of it. I'd rather have that money staying in Colorado Springs than going to a corporation, you know, somewhere out of state, as it does now, and our community to benefit from that revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Donaldson?
So whether or not to bring the ambulance service into the fire department was essentially it. And here's the big deal about this, is that ambulance service would have to stand as an enterprise. And what that means is, the city can't give it money if it starts to not make a profit and starts to have trouble. The city can't backstop it. We can't take your tax dollars and use those tax dollars to backstop the EMS service. That was a big problem the first time we considered it a year ago. So we have to be confident that it will work on its own. A big part of that was there's a special fund that other cities get a certain amount of money when you stand this up on your own. It wasn't verified that we would really get that when we voted on it the first time. Then it was verified. So go, you know, like, two months ago, I would have said, "Okay, so we are going to get that money." Now with what's going on at the federal level, I'm not sure if that money is still going to be there or if it could be cut. So we need to be sure that it will be able to stand on its own.
Thank you both for your responses.
We have had a few questions come in regarding our homeless population or those that are unhoused. And so, you each have a minute to address the question. Historically, the City of Colorado Springs and El Paso County have reduced the number of homeless and have worked more effectively with nonprofits than other comparable cities, including Denver. If you are elected, how do you intend to continue this trend while respecting the human rights and the needs of homeless or unhoused individuals? Candidate Donaldson, you go first with one minute.
Sure. So what the city does is, the city, for one thing, it helps to fund the Springs Rescue Mission to the tune of half a million dollars a year. And that comes from your tax dollars, and we provide that to Springs Rescue. And then we work with other organizations like Hope COS to have additional services. The challenge is, are we doing enough, or how do we make the situation better, both for the people who are living on the street, in our parks, down by the rivers or the creeks we just talked about, and at the same time, be fair to business owners and families that want to use those parks? One thing we recently did was we expanded the Sit-Li ordinance, which I voted to do, and that says that, hey, you can't just lay on the street or in the parking lots in this certain part of the city during the daytime. And so, it's a tough balancing act between, we have to have opportunities or programs for those who are on the streets that want to get out of that situation. But Colorado Springs cannot become the most desirable place for homeless people to come to.
Thank you. And Candidate Lemko, you're one minute.
Yeah, my faith teaches me that we're all children of God, and so, families need to feel safe walking their streets, using their parks. Business owners need to operate unimpeded and without safety or health concerns, and the homeless need to be treated with dignity and respect. I support the effect of the Sit-Li ordinance in making the city usable for all. I'm concerned that by criminalizing that activity, you make it harder to help those people downstream, because now they have a criminal record. Now they've been ticketed, now they've had a summons, and so it makes lodging harder to arrange for them as you try to get them on their feet. So we need to take that into account. We need the impact of Sit-Li, but we need to be humane about it. And actually, I think it's a cost-effectiveness issue. The expense of putting those people into the system and then the additional expense of trying to house them probably doesn't pencil out.
Thank you both. Thank you. Remember, guys, you have one minute to answer these questions. Our next question comes from our audience. And Candidate Lemko, you will be first, followed by Candidate Donaldson. "The City of Colorado Springs is growing. With the growing population, do you have ideas for better traffic management across our city?"
It's a great city, and our founders really did a good job of laying it out, except for east-west traffic. And I used to live near Woodman and Academy, and I lived through that work on the intersection there. I think one interesting solution could be, as we move forward as a city, is looking to create more than just one entertainment hub, more than just one cool part of town to go to. Let's have that in the four corners of our city, so people can work and play and exercise and be entertained without having to go across town and fight their way across. We can't, we're not going to be able to punch through Fillmore. It would be just too disruptive. We've realized that we can't do that to Constitution. I can tell you, we did it to Woodman, but there's still issues with that. You still get stopped by traffic lights. It's not as smooth as you would like. And when we see how the extension of Fountain to become MLK bypass played out, I worked along that for years, and it was very impactful to the neighborhoods, and I wouldn't want to see that. Thank you.
Yes. "The City of Colorado Springs is growing. With the growing population, do you have ideas for better traffic management across our city?"
Okay, better traffic management. We hire professionals to sort this out for us. Todd Frisbee's our roads guy. We hire consultants to help with this. It's very complex. There was a Connect COS study, which we voted on a couple of years ago. And one of the things in there, this just, what I'm going to do now is just show you how I work with citizens to protect neighborhoods, and this has to do with traffic. They did want to push, in that study, in Connect COS, they wanted to do a study to push Constitution through the Bond neighborhoods and then bring it in and connect it to I-25. It would have been a four-lane road through that area by Horace Mann Elementary. And I helped those citizens to stop that. We got that pulled out of the study, because traffic is important, right? Moving cars around effectively, but neighborhoods are even more important, and we need to protect neighborhoods. And I have done that time after time in my four years on council.
Thank you. We do have a follow-up question that is relating to this. "What are your thoughts on public transportation?" You have thirty seconds to answer. Donaldson, you're first, Lemko, you're second.
We don't get much time to answer these questions here. Thirty seconds. Public transportation. I used to be a bicycle commuter. I used to ride my bike all the way from up by UCCS, down to Fort Carson, and back. Four times a week on Friday, I drive and bring clothes. So we do want to have opportunities for people to do other things rather than drive alone in a car. The problem with bus routes is they're very expensive and honestly, few people use them, because it's not convenient. We have a very large city. We have extreme weather temperatures. It's not Europe with high density in a small area. Thank you.
I think that goes part and parcel with the creation of hubs in the city that I just mentioned and connecting those with public transit. So once you get to that place, then you don't have to figure out the next link. You don't have to Uber. You can make use of a more streamlined and robust public transit system, because I do hear the call for that, you know, as I knock on doors. People wish that there was better public transit that they could utilize, because they don't like sitting in traffic. Thank you.
For our next question, Candidate Donaldson, you are first, followed by Candidate Lemko. You still have one minute to respond. The question is, "Beyond the election, how will you learn more about ongoing concerns of city residents and engage residents to be part of the solutions?"
Great question, because it's important for city council members to do that. One thing I'm known for, and I hear this all the time, is you're the only one that answered our email, right? People send in an email and they send it all council, so it goes to all nine of us. I always answer, almost always. Sometimes I get overwhelmed on specific issues and can't, because there's just too many. But there's only a couple of us that do that. That's one thing I do. I return phone calls. I have quarterly town halls with constituents in District One. And I work with, as I've pointed out, I work with citizens. Another example of that is, there was a neighborhood just to the south of Platt, and the houses actually come right up to the businesses that were on Platt. There was a bar there. It was very noisy. There were shootings. There were racing motorcycles and cars on the street behind it. I work with that neighborhood. I even went and testified for them at municipal court to try to get the liquor license pulled off of that bar. That's how you stay in touch.
Thank you. Mr. Lemko?
Yes, certainly responding to phone calls and responding to emails is just what you have to do as an elected official. Beyond that, there's a lot of HOAs in this city, and they meet. And I would propose to get out and not just talk to them, but listen to them. Hear their concerns, hear what's going right in their neighborhoods. Golden Hills, for instance, is doing a fantastic job of fire mitigation. So let's get, you know, get that secret sauce and migrate us to other areas of the city and pull those organizations together and learn best practices. And that's really the grassroots of the neighborhoods. They know what's going on in their parks. They know what's going on in their trails. And I think it's a great resource that we could leverage on City Council to keep, get a pulse of the city that doesn't have to come down and wait to testify before council on a Tuesday morning into afternoon, evening.
We've had a couple of questions come in around development. And so, for the first of those questions, you'll have one minute. And Candidate Lemko, you'll go first. "What guidelines will you use to evaluate decisions regarding development in Colorado Springs?"
I've already stressed my interest, emphasis on affordable housing for our teachers, our young firefighters, police officers, airmen, guardians. So that's something that I really want to see emphasized. And that's why I want to, in an arms-length fashion, work with the developers to sit down at the table and hear what they are planning on doing, tell them what the city really needs to the degree that those things don't match, and then, as we move forward, hold them accountable for producing the results that we need. As was mentioned, the construction defects legislation going through the state is a good thing, but the proof is in the pudding. We won't know how well that works until it actually is fielded. So that's something we need to pay close attention to as well. But I always come back to, if, once we hire those young police officers, we need to retain them. We need to make this a welcoming, family place.
Thank you. And Candidate Donaldson, you're a minute.
Right. And the question is about guidelines for development, and what are we going to bring with us as your representative, whichever one of us you choose? And I have a record, and you can look at it. And I voted twice not to allow high-density apartment buildings to be built in a fire evacuation choke point, 2424 Garden of the Gods, then the Widener Apartments right next to Red Lake. Why do I do that? Because the first thing I worry about or I consider, we have criteria to review. Does this development meet these criteria? But one of those is basically public safety, public nuisance. Is it good for the neighborhood? I'm always going to look first to the neighborhoods and say, "Is this good for the people that live here now?" The two large flagpole annexations, Amara and Carmen Line, I voted against both of those. Why? It's going to make longer response times. It's going to cause enclaves, county enclaves inside this city. I have a record of voting against those. Developers try to get people on council who will vote yes on their projects.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, we have a question here about annexation and priorities. What should our priorities be when considering annexation projects in Colorado Springs? One minute as your time. And Candidate Donaldson, can we have your answer first?
You betcha. And so, we're going right back to what I just talked about. We had two big ones. And there are criteria we are given. And criteria number one is it should be a logical extension of the city boundaries. So you tell me why a chunk of land, two thousand acres, three miles outside the city boundary is a logical extension. Does it sound logical to any of you? I don't think it is. We don't have enough water currently, right, to develop the current footprint of the city. We need thirty thousand more acre feet. So this is the bread and butter of what City Council does. When you elect somebody, be sure you know how they're going to vote on these kind of issues, because this is the real power that we have on council. The mayor doesn't get to vote on this. It's council. If it's not a logical extension, if it's a flagpole annexation, if it's going to cause longer response times for fire and police, why should we want that, right? Know who you're electing.
Thank you. Candidate Lemko?
Yeah, interestingly, Briargate was a flagpole annexation. Flying Horse was a flagpole annexation. And I know a lot of people from Briargate, and I think it worked out pretty well for them. You know, it's a way of getting started. Would it be better if it was contiguous to the city? Sure, but you don't know that that land's going to be purchasable. So if we are to grow, we need to balance all these factors. And back to the affordable housing as well, and keeping the supply growing reasonably sensibly, intentionally, so we don't turn ourselves into Boulder, where unless they're independently wealthy, your kids don't have a prayer of like, living next to you in Boulder. But I want that in Colorado Springs. I want my grandson and great-granddaughter to be able to live in this city and put down their roots and be proud and thrive in the city that they wish to serve. So I'm going to keep coming back to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Reminder, one minute to answer. Candidate Limcol, you will be first, followed by Donaldson. Your question is, what do you think about supporting a resolution to create city council positions that are appropriately compensated to help broaden city council participation, particularly among young professionals with families?
That's, yeah, that's, hello? That's really important. And, yeah, because you've gotta be, you know, military retiree with a second career, and, and now, you know, enough time on my hands that I can see my way clear to do this. A young professional building their career, you know, would not, would not be able to do this at all. So, yes, I think these positions should be paid a reasonable amount. I, I think the, the median income in Colorado Springs would be, would be an interesting number to explore, because the, the citizens are gonna have to approve this. But I think the citizens will get a better result long-term because of the breadth and depth of expertise that they'll have on, on, on council and the different perspectives. So you get that, that person with a young, you know, young, growing family on, on council, seeing it through that lens, as opposed to me having to, to work to see it through the lens of my kids and grandkids.
Thank you. Donaldson?
And was the question about compensation, is that what the question is?
Yes, let me repeat it. What do you think about supporting a resolution to create city council positions that are appropriately compensated to help broaden city council participation, particularly among young professionals with families?
Yeah, okay. Well, it has gone to the ballot in the past, and perhaps some of you remember it, and a, a pay raise for council was destroyed the last time it was on, on the ballot. Citizens didn't like that idea. So we get paid $6,250 a year. It's a stipend, it's not, not really a salary. You know, one thing to consider is, is Denver pays their council, I don't know, 120? Is it, is it more than that, 120,000 a year? And you've gotta look at what they get for their 120,000 and wonder if we want that down here. So I, I, I am concerned that we, we need to find a way to, to pay more, but it doesn't guarantee you you're gonna get a better result. And I think Denver might be the poster child for that. They pay them, again, six figures, and I would say Denver is, is a little dysfunctional in certain areas. It will have to go to the ballot. So eventually, it'll, it'll be the decision of the citizens, not council, whether to increase pay.
Thank you. For our next question, candidate Donaldson, you're first, followed by candidate Limcol. Again, one minute to respond. The question is, what are your top three priorities, and how would you address budget constraints to achieve them?
And all in one minute. So really, anybody running for council is probably gonna say the same thing for their top three priorities. Number one, public safety, right? Police and fire. Number two, infrastructure, our roads, stormwater, which we've already talked about. Three is parks, or they'll say business, and then if they say business three, they'll say parks four. So, and, and there's a good reason. Those are the most important things that the city can do for you, is we need to provide good police and fire, smooth roads, infrastructure, and, and good parks. So I'm on board with all that. One thing I do want to consider, and we talked about it, in this next four years for me, if you're so kind as to, or you, you say, hey, you know what, he's done a good job, let's, let's bring him back for four more years, is election campaign reform or election finance. I do think we should have a limit to how much a council member can receive from a developer or anyone else. There should be, there is in the presidential election, there is in every state office, so why not on city council? And I think we should consider mandatory recusal for council members who receive donations from developers.
Thank you. Mr. Limcol?
Yeah, public safety, we've talked about that, and we'll keep talking about it. Yeah, 65, police officers, short, short 30 firefighters, and then when we, when we recruit them, we have to retain them. I, I also think the cost of utilities is, is something that I hear a lot about, too, as I knock doors throughout District One. It's, it keeps going up, and, and it's not 'cause CSU is, is greedy, no, because they're us, but we need to work hard to, to think about our families, and think about how we keep Colorado Springs as a, a place that families can, can put down roots and thrive, and not be, and not be seriously encumbered by rising utility bills. We've got 2C for the roads, we have to stay after that. I hear a lot about potholes, and, and certainly, the, the work is ongoing and always will be. But I, I think that if we can look after our neighborhoods and our families so this is a welcoming, thriving place, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the end of the night, and we have one last question to ask, and because it is, there's so many that came in around it, so we'll try to combine it as best we possibly can. So again, we have one minute for each one of the questions, for, for each of you to respond. And the question is this. Mental health concern and concerns about substance abuse, particularly among opioid use, is a big concern in the Pikes Peak region, as noted in the Pulse survey. There are concerns around recreational marijuana, and whether or not that will exacerbate those concerns. Can you tell us a little bit about your thoughts about those concerns? And candidate Limcol, you have the first minute.
Okay. Well, yeah, and, and I share those concerns. This problem is, is widespread, it, there's, there's, there's many causes, but, yeah, recreational marijuana, it's, it's a fact of life now. The voters, voters voted for it. And, and I, I voted against 300 in November, but now I respect the, I respect the will of voters. They've spoken really clearly on that. So it's, it's something that we need to start at the, you know, the earliest date with our young people. And, and not in a, you know, not in the old scared, straight, you know, manner that we tried in the past that probably didn't work very well, but, but respecting the intelligence of our, of our youth, and providing them the information they need to, to make good choices with their lives. So this goes, this goes into the schools, this goes into the, into the churches, this goes into the sports teams. We need to, we need to lift up our kids, educate them, and care for them.
And candidate Donaldson, your minute.
Okay, thank you. And with the court's ruling that, hey, no repeal could be placed on the ballot, what would've been on this ballot, that's it. So we're gonna have recreational marijuana sales starting next month, yeah, in April in Colorado Springs. So we, council accepts that. It is, it is important. Education is gonna be very important to, to help young people and, and all of us really understand how dangerous this high-level THC is. It's not like marijuana in the past. It's, it's very, very potent. There's a Dr. Ken Finn who's spoken to the Board of Health, he's spoken to council, he, he, he's a, he's a physician, he's an internationally known expert on this, and he has, he has grave concerns about this. He doesn't, he's not, he disagrees with big tobacco, big alcohol, and he says what we have now is, is big marijuana. And they are out to make money, and they're gonna try to increase their profits through sales. So education's the key.
Thank you very much. That is the end of the questions that the audience had, both online and in person, and also the questions for us. We will now ask each candidate to finish with their closing statement. We're going to go in reverse order from our opening, and that leaves, that leaves us with candidate Donaldson, you go first.
Okay.
And one minute.
Oh, it's not two, it's one?
It is one.
Is that right? It's one?
One minute. The paper says one minute, so I'm gonna go with that.
Whatever it is. So I want to thank all of you who are here in person tonight, and I want to thank those who watch this online. It's been a privilege to represent District One over the last four years. I ask for your vote to let me, to do it again for another four years. That's it. We can only do it for eight years on council. I have a lot of experience. I've been the Chair of Utilities, I've served as the Vice Chair of PPRTA, the Transportation Authority, I've served on PPACG, and a lot of other boards and committees. Just appointed as the President of El Paso County Board of Health. And that happened, and why did they, why did they vote me in unanimously? Because I have a lot of common sense and expertise in these areas. I'm endorsed by Bill Weisong, I'm endorsed by Don Knight, Commissioner Weisong, former Councilman Knight. I'm endorsed by the, the 2021 CSPD Officer of the Year, Randy Blackburn, and others. Please go to my website and see all of these endorsements. You know, I do ask for your vote to give me another four years to continue to vote for you.
Thank you. And candidate Limcol?
Yeah, I'm committed to restoring collegiality and collaboration to city council. It's been woefully lacking, as, as we've seen in the last, last two, three, four years, and it's gotten progressively worse. I think that my, I think that council needs to work together to look after our, our families and our neighborhoods. I've been endorsed by former Sheriff Bill Elder, the Police Protective Association, Firefighters Local Five, former District One Counselor Scott Henty, and others. And, and I have built a career working on teams, with teams, building teams, and that's what, that's what city council needs to be. It's, it, it's, governance, politics is a team sport, and, and we have to have a functioning team that can move this city forward and, and make it, continue to make it the beautiful place that people want to come to, to recreate and, and live and worship. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that wraps up our live and virtual forum for Colorado Springs City Council, District One. We thank you for joining us this evening. These recordings are available on the League of Women Voters of the Pikes Peak Region's website at l w v ppr.org, on our YouTube channel under Live, and on the League's Making Democracy Work podcast. I would like to give our candidates a big hand for being here to answer questions and share your vision. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.